The order, like to welcome everybody to the September 5th meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council and remind everybody to silence their electronic devices.
I've never even heard that sound.
That one came in before the warning, so I guess there's a pass on that one. So if you would please silence your electronic devices and please stand and join me for the invocation and the pledge.
Lord, as we gather here this evening to exercise our freedom to self-govern, help us to remember that many people still live under tyranny today. While we recognize the many divisions in our country, we are also grateful to live in a country where our differences are tolerated and not suppressed by violence or hatred. Help us to demonstrate to others how people with diverse views can successfully work together in advancing the common good of the community. We also pray tonight that those affected by Hurricane Adalia will feel your healing grace and the support of their fellow Americans as they recover. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our historical fact concerning Temple Terrace, and for those of you who may be watching at home, I know everybody who in the gallery knows what we're doing here, but for those of you who may be watching from home, we've begun a new tradition here of opening our meetings with a historical or interesting or unusual fact concerning the city of Temple Terrace, could be historical or current. But anyway, we rotate that responsibility, and tonight it falls on our Vice Mayor, James Chambers.
Thank you very much, Mayor. All right, this is an ordinance from November of 1955, and it's numbered Ordinance 25. And I started looking, and that's not 25 in one year, I think that's from 25 from when the city started. But anyway, this is an ordinance about animals. An ordinance making it unlawful for any person to keep, harbor, maintain, or have custody of any dog, cat, or other animal or fowl within the limits of the city, which by barking, howling, crowing, cackling, or by any other noises, or by the destruction or damage of property creates a nuisance or disturbance of the peace and/or quiet or infringes on the rights of adjoining neighbors. So that's a pretty broad ordinance. I don't think that's exactly the ordinance we have now, but I looked at it more, and this is the, if dogs are in violation, so this is a dog, "The owner, custodian, or keeper of any dog within the city shall cause said dog to be confined and prevented from running a following action of said dog shall take place." So there's four criteria. One, having on two or more occasions bitten a person or persons. Okay? I don't know why this one's different, but having on two or more occasion caused personal injury. Three, having on two or more occasion caused damage to property. And then the last one, having on two or more occasion caused a vehicular accident. And I'm not sure if that's running in front of a car or driving a car, but anyway, that was the ordinance back then, so.
Good, thank you, Vice Mayor. Always makes me wonder what the discussion must have been like when I read these old ordinances and like what the, what was the discussion or what the, it's like policies in the police department, chief, there's always a name on every policy, and you've got to know there's a names on some of those things. Something happened to cause that, so. Very good, thank you. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from our August 15th meeting? And if so, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
To approve. Second.
Okay, good. Motion is second. Any corrections or adjustments to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays, the minutes are adopted. The next section, or persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. We do have forms in the back of the room, I currently don't have any, but if you'd like to address the council, please come forward at this time. We do have a three-minute time limit imposed on all public, each member of the public who addresses the council, and we ask that you address us from the podium so that we can get you on record. I currently have no requests to speak. Okay, we will move on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays, the consent agenda is approved. The next two items are related, although there are separate public hearings, but for those watching, I want them, people to understand what we're going to do. These are separate public hearings, however, we have one presentation that deals with both topics. And rather than make everybody listen to the same slideshow twice, our finance director and city manager will present the slideshow that covers both topics during the first public hearing. We will close that hearing, have discussion, vote on that, and then have the second hearing, which will reference the slideshow, but we won't walk through it again. The reason I bring that up for the public, if there are questions that you have, it's a good idea to pay attention to the slideshow during the first hearing, because, I mean, we can pull it up if you have questions, but we won't be going through it again. Does that make sense? Okay. First public hearing and first reading of Ordinance 1553, approving the fiscal year '24 tax levy. I will open the public hearing and ask our finance director, Jim Ingram, to approach and explain, or the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, thank you for indulging us in this sort of different way of approaching the presentation this evening. So I'll be candid and let you know upfront that I'm working with two or three different electronic devices, which is very dangerous for all involved, so hopefully I'll keep us on task. So this evening, we're going to be talking about the general fund budget. On the evening of the 19th, that particular hearing, we'll revisit the second hearing, the second public hearing for the general fund, then we'll also talk about utilities that, that evening, so.
Is this the same as the tax levy? Because that's this hearing.
Correct, so we're going to do the tax levy.
It's all in here.
It's all in here, correct, yes. So before we start, I think it's always important whenever you talk about a budget to understand where we are in terms of the current environment and sort of the macroeconomics of our Temple Terrace area. So we were fortunate this year to have a reasonably healthy growth rate in terms of our taxable property value, came in at 9.4%. That was down, obviously, from the year before, it was in excess of 26%, but 26 is not sustainable. Everybody understands that, that was largely the Amazon facility that sort of distorted that, that figure. But 9.4 is still very good. That has provided us with some cushion to absorb some of these challenges, which I'll be talking about throughout tonight's presentation. First of all, inflation. So we continue to see a lot of inflationary pressures. This is despite the fact that the Federal Reserve has made multiple increases to interest rates, and my reading of it is that there's at least one, if not two, more increases coming, probably in the next year to year and a half. But we struggle with it particularly when it comes to a couple of things. First, wages. The city of Tampa, a year ago, made a concerted decision to increase the wages of a lot of its workforce, perhaps its entire workforce. And what, what that did is it created a ripple effect throughout all of Hillsborough County, greater Tampa, Hillsborough County, depending how you want to define it. Every other community, so the county itself, the sheriff's office, Plant City, everybody is scrambling now because we're, all the employees that are in this marketplace can go to Tampa just as easily as they come to Temple Terrace or Plant City, et cetera, because we're all pretty, in a pretty close geography here. So that has made for some incredible pressures. We've had to be creative, we've done a lot of good things, and thanks to the direction of council in your current budget, we've been able to make some inroads there, and we'll talk about those as well. But this continues to be a factor. If you listen to a lot of reports out there on the national economy, particularly from a Tampa focus, they'll, they'll say Tampa's sort of been an exception. We're seeing cooling in wages and cooling in some other areas of the economy around the country. We've not seen it here as much, largely because people want to be here. This is a very attractive area, so more people come in here, more people are competing for, for, for resources, et cetera, so it kind of plays into this inflationary mix that's going on now. Second element that's really been a factor has also been insurance. In the budget that we're going to present to you this evening, we're looking at insurance increases, for example, in our property liability and, and, excuse me, general liability and property of excess of 31% is what we programmed in. That sounds bad enough, but if you just pull out the property piece of that, the property piece went up by 60%, due almost entirely to Hurricane Ian from last year. So can you imagine, we had Hurricane Ian, now compound that with Hurricane Adalia, next year, who knows what those rates will be? So those are big shocks, and anybody that's in the audience here or watching at home, you know, in your own residential homeowner's policy, you probably struggle to get it, first of all, and you're probably seeing large increases, hopefully not double-digit increases, but some folks probably have seen that as well. So that, that, that's out there also, influencing everything that we do. Another factor has been, we talked just a second ago about interest rates, so as I mentioned, they're projected to remain high, and this is the double-edged sword for us. The negative side of that is it's slowed developer interest. So we talked about, you know, we want to make sure we have healthy growth because it allows us to do a lot of things we want to do and keep our millage rate as, at a reasonable level. But we've seen with the higher interest rates, developers that would look at properties like the CRA properties are now doing the math, and they're realizing with the interest rate on the financing they would acquire, the return on investment is going to be a lot less than they originally would have had, let's say, a year or two ago. So that's slowed some of that purchase interest on, on that land. On the flip side of that, we, as a city, we have a savings account, we have multiple savings accounts, like a lot of entities, so we're seeing a higher investment return. In fact, in our budget, we have 1.1, actually, $1.16 million in interest income in the FY '24 budget, which is very healthy. I would imagine that when the interest rates were down close to zero, you know, that number probably dropped dramatically. I mean, if anything, it was probably negligible. So that's good for the city right now, but you take the good with the bad. We're still seeing also material and supply chain challenges. Our upper projects, if you talk to Mr. Tinch, our utilities director, he'll tell you, look, if a lot of our drainage projects, for example, things like that, if we need to get pipe for certain projects, we got to order that almost a year in advance, just to guarantee that it'll get here when we finally, you know, get to that point of putting it in the ground. This evening, there's going to be a lot of rolling stock that you're going to have in this, in the FY '24 budget. Almost all of it is, is not funded from the general fund, so it's not related to the millage rate, it's funded from our community investment tax. There's a lot of it in there, and I would be shocked if we're able to acquire all of it over the next fiscal year. We're funding for it, again, through the community investment tax, not the general fund, but the reality is it's very, very tough to find vehicles and other equipment right now. Silver lining, though, is we have seen over the last quarter, our recruitment of new employees has, in my mind, dramatically improved. I want to give some credit, not just to the council, but I also want to credit Mr. Tony Nazario, our new HR director. He's really made a priority of trying to, you know, get our postings out there to different venues, and also making sure that when we, God bless you, making sure when we get those resumes, that we turn them around to the hiring managers as quickly as possible. So we've, we've seen a dramatic improvement there with recruitment. And that recruitment has also been made better because of the things that have been done this year, thanks to the council's direction in the FY '23 budget. So just a quick recap for the, for the public. This past year, we implemented new labor grades for all our general employees. We also made some in-grade adjustments to reflect the marketplace, so we compare ourselves to about 17 different communities in greater, the greater Tampa area. We did various different recruiting incentives, worked largely, for example, in the police department to do police academy sponsorships for select officers, we also did some recruit salaries. We went to job fairs, we actually pulled people, some of our successful recruitments were at these job fairs. We were also directed at the fiscal '23 budget to really work on improving the health benefits of our, of our staff, again, because we, we want to make sure we're competitive, and if you compare us to other municipalities, our health insurance coverings, coverage is not, the coverage is good, but the way it's funded is not as attractive as it is in other places. So we've tried to make improvements there. Our employees with single coverage still get excellent insurance for no cost or very low cost. Employees with families independence, which is our biggest challenge in terms of the past, we've made some inroads, and I think we want to do a lot better as we keep going. We've programmed 15% more to cover health insurance in this coming budget. And we're also looking at doing some progressive career path improvements. What that means, we're using the finance department sort of as the ex, the experiment here, is we invest a lot in our employees, and we like it when they succeed, but we'd like it if they succeed here and not necessarily go somewhere else and have a great career. So we want, but there's certain departments where you just don't have a path, you know, you bump up against somebody who's ahead of you, and they've probably got 10 more years ahead of them. And so what we're doing in finance department is sort of emulating what's done sort of in PD and FIRE, where you have an ability to sort of internally promote if you meet certain milestones, and so that's a process that we're going to look to emulate perhaps in other departments over the next year. So the most important slide is probably this next one, which is, we are not proposing an increase in the millage rate for fiscal year '24. As I mentioned, we had a decent cushion with the increase in taxable value. We also have the benefit, as I, as I've stated multiple times, about the community investment tax and other, other resources. And I also want to really give thanks a lot for this to our finance team, Jim Ingram, Jennifer Newman, Jamie Devey, and the entire staff. They have really sharpened the pencil and been able to find ways to make sure that we can do this in a way that will not be as, as impactful on our property owners in this community. So one way that that's been accomplished, as I mentioned, was the property valuation. So you see here, our taxable value is now for 2024, these are the certified values, So generates revenue about nearly $18 million in, in revenue. Now, where does that place us compared to other communities? So if we look, if we look at, we have eight communities in this, in this pool here, and Temple Terrace, I wish I had a pointer, because I could show you where this is, but Temple Terrace is the third lowest. This is the millage rate here, so if you see the first, the lowest, is the unincorporated county at 17.39, and that's total tax burden, so I just, I don't want to mislead folks. It's not just the municipal portion of tax, but it's every single tax, including some communities have a fire service fee, a library tax, whatever it is, everything is calculated here, because that's ultimately what you care about as a resident, you care about what's your total, you know, what's the hit. So you see here, Temple Terrace, we're the third lowest, the, the most expensive community is Zephyr Hills, which I want to remind Steve Spin of next time I see him.
Yeah.
They're over 23 mills, and Tampa is right there now, too, with Tampa, this is the, what's proposed for FY '24, so this is the current.
This includes the proposed.
This includes the proposed tax rate, so that's where they are right now, they're at 20.1974, again, based on what's proposed, just like ours is based on what's proposed this evening. So in this budget, if you are a budget aficionado out there in the public and you read the budget cover to cover, you'll notice some distinct changes. First, you'll see in community development that the department numbers drop considerably for FY '24, and the reason they drop is because per Florida statute, we have to create a special revenue fund for the building division to provide more transparency in the legislature's mind in terms of what dollars come in from permits, for example, and how they're allocated to costs for staffing and whatnot. So we've done that this year, we have a special revenue fund, which means those dollars have been pulled out of the general fund, and they're shown in the special revenue fund now, so you'll see, that's why there's a disparity there. We also revised the internal overhead allocation rates, these are the, sort of the overhead costs that we charged all enterprise funds, for example, for overhead from finance, human resources, those sort of communal support departments, and those rates have not been looked at in years. So this year, Jim and his team, they went through and they made some changes to that to sort of reflect where we are today. So those will be distinct from FY '23. This budget also reflects the council priorities that were set out in February at the meeting that we had at Woodmont. Council was very adamant about us maintaining our competitiveness, so this budget includes a 4% cost of living adjustment for all our general employees. It also implements a new 2% merit pay increase that will be triggered upon an employee's successful completion of a performance evaluation. Again, we want to, we want to reward people who are doing a good job, so this is a way of doing that. As I mentioned, we have a 15% increase in health insurance flex investment dollars programmed in the budget. We are also continuing our contribution to employees' health savings accounts, so employees that choose a high deductible plan, which is the most consumer-driven plan, if you will. What we've done is we've made investments, we provide, I believe it's in, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's $1,000 for a family, $750 for a wife or spouse, I should say, and then 500 for a single employee on single coverage. I'm getting a nod, it's kind of a quizzical nod, I'll take that as a yes. So for any employee that chooses a high deductible plan, we are investing in their HSA, so that helps with that deductible impact, and so that, that provides a very, for certain people, depending on circumstance, it's a great plan, it's very, very cheap, no cost, in fact, you get money back, and you have the city contributing as well to your, to your account, which you can take anywhere when you leave the organization. We're also proposing a, a sliding wage scale, which is something that I'm very familiar with in my past experience, I think works well to prevent the stagnation of our labor grades. Right now, our, our grades are oriented, basically, they have a minimum and they have a maximum, and unless you, you, you adjust the minimums and the maximums to keep up with sort of inflation and cost of living, what happens is they get very stale very quickly. And then you find yourself in a year, year and a half, having to go back and do another survey and such, and that just takes a lot of time and effort and resources. So we're hoping this will alleviate some of that. It won't mean that in several years, we won't have to do another survey, but it won't be as frequent, hopefully, and it'll just make us, continue to make us a little bit more attractive from a recruitment perspective, and also provide some growth at the end of, of people who've been here for a long time, continues to give them some growth and some potential to stay with the organization. Another thing that, that we're going to do in this, in this particular budget came about recently, so in July, the police union reached out to the city administration with a concern, as I mentioned earlier, we are competing largely with the city of Tampa, particularly for our police officers, and the concern was that the Temple Terrace contract that was signed, and we're actually just in the first year of that three-year contract with the police department, that contract was signed, and within a matter of about a week, the city of Tampa signed their contract, which was, which again, set everything off for everybody else. As a result, the police union felt there was a significant disparity in wages that was counterproductive to our trying to do better recruitment and retention. They made a request to reopen the contract, which we acceded to. I want to thank both teams, the city's side of the team as well as the union's side. Everybody worked really, really well to get this done very quickly. We have actually worked to bring about a new three-year contract, so we're scrapping the old contract, basically inheriting most of the terms that have nothing to do with the, the fiscal picture, and we're going to start a new contract, which will be off-cycle with the city of Tampa, so we avoid having the situation where we adopt a contract and then Tampa adopts it a week later, and again, here we repeat this cycle, so we're going to be a year behind them. That contract is fully, year one of that contract is fully funded in this proposed budget for you this evening. This budget also focuses on city facilities and grounds. I know this council has talked extensively about making sure that our, our facilities look like world-class facilities. They want us to look like we have pride in who we are as Temple Terrace, and that our residents have pride in, in their public facilities. So we have a lot invested here, we have nearly a million dollars of CIT dollars in just our leisure services department, a lot of that into the, the public facilities, the family rec center, parks and playgrounds. We have $50,000 program for additional improvements here at city hall. We are also going to be improving our facilities through bringing custodial service in-house. We've had an outside contractor do it, we feel we can do it better and cheaper if we do it ourselves, and we also are doing some improvements to landscaping at the family rec center, and we also, also include a design of the new park facility on River Hills Drive as well in this budget. Another topic was process improvement, so this is something that, I know the mayor's mentioned multiple times, the notion of we want to institutionalize good, sound policy. I think everybody's working towards that goal, but we need to have somebody who can kind of spearhead a lot of those process improvements. So we're proposing this budget to create a project administrator position, work, work in finance, would look at a lot of lingering financial issues that need to be addressed, like business tax receipts, our financial management system will need to be overhauled, to be replaced with a new ERP. When I say ERP, that's, I believe it's enterprise resource planning, which is basically a financial system, and which is a huge investment, but it needs somebody to manage that process, not only figure out the research and how do you acquire the, the companies and the bids and whatnot, but also then to manage the whole implementation, which can take several years. So we'd like to start that by hiring a project administrator, and that's proposed in the budget. At the goal-setting session, Vice Mayor Chambers also talked about making sure we had dollars in the budget for restriping our city streets, there are places we see that, obviously, that those, that could be touched up, and so we have $50,000 in the budget to do that also. Talking about new staff positions, mentioned the custodians, mentioned the project administrator. Want to make note of the facilities foreman position. So today, we have a, one position, it's a grounds and facilities foreman. Candidly, if you talk to Ray and, or myself, we'll tell you that that's, that's just a label. Reality is that person is just a grounds foreman, and that, they do that probably 95% or more of their job is, is grounds foreman. The facilities foreman, the de facto facilities foreman, has been our public works director, Ray LeBlanc. That's probably why he's retiring so quickly, unexpectedly, just to get out of town and stop that from happening. But Ray will be missed, and the, but Ray told me months ago, he said, look, we, we need somebody, if we're making this investment in our facilities, all the things we're programming in this budget, we want to make sure that we maintain those facilities and don't just let them fall into decay so very quickly. So we have a position, half-funded in the general fund and half in the enterprise fund to do that. The project administrative position I mentioned earlier, I want to make note, it's half in the general fund and half also in enterprise funds, because it touches all the funds. And then we have here the human resources administrative assistant. So for several years, there's been a temp in the human resources office, about a 19-hour a week temp that has assisted with their efforts. Mr. Nazario's come on board, and he recommends that that be moved to a permanent position, about a 30-hour a week position, part-time, so that would be a three-quarters add to the general fund in terms of FTEs. So overall impact to the general fund would be 2.75 FTEs. Now, despite the fact that we've talked about paying for wages and insurance and a new police contract and things of that nature, and new positions, I want the public and the council specifically to be aware that we are still being prudent with the dollars that we have. And when I say being prudent, I think of it the way I was raised, my parents saved, it seems like, every single penny known to humanity, and that's the way I was raised, and it's important to me, and it's important to our team. So if you look at this budget, we, we're still contributing to the unassigned fund balance, despite the fact we're doing all these other things, we're contributing $68,800 to the unassigned fund balance. And for the public, what that means, the unassigned fund balance is your rainy day fund or your savings account, that's the, the dollars that you, you put away to make sure that when there's a hurricane, you have cash on hand. When there's a capital project, and that's what I really want to highlight here, we're going to have a lot of capital projects over the next several years. We're, we're going to talk about them extensively over the next, this, tonight and in the next meeting as well. We're talking about a new police station, potentially a new fire station, refurbishment of a water treatment facility, a new ERP system, as we talked about. Those are multi-million dollar investments, and so we, we want to have the unassigned fund balance be as robust as possible, the And so we want to have the unassigned fund balance be as robust as possible, the pilsum dollars from there to help offset that cost. In this case here, in Temple Terrace, we anticipate by the end of this fiscal year that our unassigned fund balance is a ratio, a target that council has given us, 20% is the ratio. I'm happy to say, at the end of this fiscal year, it looks like we're going to be at 37.9% in terms of unassigned fund balance. And again, I want to reiterate, before people say, "Wait a minute, isn't that too much?" Well, again, think about the fact that two, three years from now, we're going to have five different projects that are going to probably total at least $20 million or more to do. So those are the kind of things you want to keep in mind as you move forward. But we're doing very well here, and then this is kudos to the great planning of all the department heads and kind of making sure that they're frugal with the dollars they have, and they plan ahead. Now, one of the things that we will need to discuss in the future probably is debt service in terms of potentially new debt service to accomplish some of these projects that we've mentioned. But right now, what I'm very happy about is the fact that we are, we're making incredible inroads in the two debt instruments that we have. The country club loan is due to sunset next year. It's got a balance of $479,143. Once that's paid off, it doesn't mean that the country club is off the hook. They still have to repay us until the year 2043, if I'm not mistaken. So that's an ongoing repayment obligation that they will continue to have. The CRA note also has gone down dramatically over the years, thanks to the city's efforts. So right now, we're looking at about $11.2 million left in that debt, and we're making good strides to pay that off as well. And I mentioned this in my interview, actually, when I was standing at this podium back in August. This city does not have a lot of debt, and I'm not advocating for, you know, taking a lot of debt, but it does not have a lot of debt. I'm happy to see we're paying it down, we're building some capacity, and I think we'll be in good stead in the future if we need to do something in terms of some of our bigger capital investments. But I'm happy this is going in definitely in the right direction. So here's probably the meat and potatoes for the budget right now. It's our capital improvement plan. So public safety, in our, we're paying for most of our capital improvement plan, probably 99% of it, through the community investment tax. Of that, it's about a $2.8 million investment in capital this year from the community investment tax. Of that number, 55% is going to public safety. You see here on this slide, I don't know if I'll read everything on this slide, but you can see, the public can see it obviously at home or here in the room. We're revamping our fleet, taking out vehicles that have in excess of 100,000 miles or 10-plus years, for example. We're taking those vehicles out of service and putting in new vehicles. We're also in phase one, proposing phase one of a planned replacement of our tasers and our body camera equipment. So I've learned something new here over the last few months, is that your tasers become less effective over time, even if you just never use them, but they're just sitting there over time and they become less effective. So that's one thing that really raised my attention when the chief mentioned that to me, because the last thing you want is an officer trying to subdue somebody, and the taser's only at half-power. So that's something we want to make sure that we do for our officer's safety. Body camera as well, something that's important to us for transparency and for the public. So that's phase one, is programmed in this budget. Drones, you see two unmanned aerial vehicles. Not that we want to buy more drones, this again, just for the public certification, is the fact that the law in Florida changed. We had two drones, they had Chinese technology. That technology is no longer allowed to be used by local governments in Florida, so we had to buy two replacement drones. I'm happy to report, last week, the police department, thanks to the efforts of Chief Alvano and Deputy Chiefs Daly, they were able to secure a grant funding from the state to basically reimburse us for the Chinese drones, which in essence will be a wash then when we buy these new ones. So that won't impact the CIT, but we've, that came so late, we left it in the budget right now. We're also proposing the purchase of a new ambulance for the fire department, a command vehicle, finish up some work at Fire Station Two with the rear apron, concrete work that was done this year, but they found another section that could kind of, they should work to improve. And then hardening of the roofs of both Stations One and Two, and this is, I want to commend Chief Kemp, he's sort of the grant master. He finds dollars everywhere. He just like digs a hole and there's money growing there. So he's done really well to find grants for that, so we're really looking probably at the match for this. So I'm grateful for that effort. The other large investment that this community is going to be making is in leisure services or largely parks and rec for the public. So we have, if you add all these improvements up, it's over $900,000. Again, coming from the community investment tax. There's things here from all over the city, so a lot of the folks in the room have probably used, you know, multiple of these amenities. Youth sports complex, Family Rec Center, Buddy Baseball, all over the place. A lot of great work, Lightfoot Center is being improved as well. I want to also mention that we have money in this budget for historical display cabinets. This is something that Councilmember Fernandez had talked about. These will be cabinets that we can put some in the Family Rec Center, others at the library, for example, and have events that will mark some of those exhibits and artifacts, be able to show those as part of the centennial and then going obviously into posterity. So that's also included in this leisure services capital investment. Now, we do have a small amount of capital funded from the general fund. These were projects that Mr. Ingram looked at and felt that didn't really meet the letter of the community investment tax. So there's network switch equipment, and again, this is a very IT-oriented thing. Sally's not even here, so she's like, she's hiding on us. This is her item. This is to improve the functionality of our network. It's $60,000 of it is in the general fund, $20,000 is spread out over the utilities, the different enterprise funds, I should say. We also have the EOC dollars in this, but it's basically just accounting purposes. The four and a half million are coming in, but they're from the state. One and a half million is from the Rollins and Ranch sale, which is what the council directed us to do. So it's not really impacting the millage rate. There's a replacement pickup truck here for public works, a riding lawn mower, re-sanding of the pool deck, a new carpet for the gymnastics spring floor, and then a turf mow for leisure services. All in all, once you take out the EOC component, which is basically a pass-through, we're looking at about $183,000 just for this capital in the general fund. Again, so the bulk of it is definitely coming out of the community investment tax. Now, we're getting to the end. One thing that I think is very important is that we can't just look at the budget as a snapshot today. I think we really need to look at the budget as to what it means for the next year or even two years going now. So we need to think about what's coming up on the horizon. First, we've been very fortunate, this community has been blessed to have so much ARPA dollars. We have a lot of projects, and Mr. Tinch is probably getting grayer. Next year, you should look, he'll probably be a lot grayer, because he's managing a lot of those ARPA projects, him and Mr. McCarthy. But that's, again, dollars that we hadn't counted on several years ago, those have come now. But those dollars will go away. A year or two, we will not have ARPA funds anymore. The community investment tax, as I mentioned, critical funding source for this community. We received $1.85 million from the CIT this past year. That will go away in 2026 unless the voters approve or somebody makes an initiative to get the voters to approve resigning up for however many years it would be for that tax. I will stress, this tax, how valuable it is. Can you imagine this community having to find $1.85 million every single year? We would be hard-pressed to do that. We'll also say that this is a, despite the fact that it is a tax, it's a tax paid by everybody, tourists, people going to games, downtown, et cetera, everybody's paying this. So it dilutes the impact on our property owners and residents in our community. So it's very important, and I hope it is renewed. We also want to think about macroeconomically how we're developing as a community. So how is our office market, for example, telecom park, very attractive suburban office park? Well, would the pandemic, remote work, really had an impact there? And now businesses that are coming back into the office, they're not coming back to suburban office parks. Their employees demand something different now. So what they're doing, a lot of times, is taking less office space in downtown areas where people can walk, it's very different, like very diverse downtown amenities. So these suburban office parks are now having to scramble and figure out what their new identity is going to be. So we just want to look at that, because that could have implications. Hopefully, it'll be positive implications, but right now, it's too early to tell. Preemption, also another issue. Every year, there's several bills or laws that get passed even at the legislature that further erode local government control. So we just have to make sure we are aware of those and advocate for the community where we can, if appropriate. We already talked about the large projects and the infrastructure needs that are going to be on the horizon. And finally, I want to say, one other item that will definitely impact next year's budget is going to be the firefighter contract. The fire department firefighters are in their last year of their contract, and in fiscal '25, we will bring to you, hopefully, if we come to resolution, a new set of basically fiscal implications for a new contract. And undoubtedly, again, in the overall wage picture we're looking at, that will have a pretty serious impact on the city's budget in '25. So having said all that, I'm happy to stand for questions, or sit for questions, I guess, in my case.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. B. U. That was very well-prepared and well-done. So thank you, and thank you to our finance staff also. So are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Very good. Okay, council members, let's remember that the purpose of this particular hearing is to talk about establishing the millage rate. We sat through the whole budget presentation, but the hearing that we're presently in is to establish the millage rate. And as soon as we vote on that and close this hearing, the next hearing we're going to reopen is probably the more appropriate hearing to have the full discussion so that the record is clean. Okay. Council members, are there questions of the city manager or finance staff regarding the millage rate? Oh, Mr. Ingram.
For the record, Mr. B. did a great job on the budget and the millage rate. We do need to read, present the ordinance, and there's some requirements that are going to sound repetitive, but they're required to be read along with the introduction of the millage ordinance. So if you're, I don't know if you want me to go ahead and do that, or if you wanted...
Are there questions at this point? Because the next thing I was going to have him do is read the ordinance anyway.
Okay.
No, no, don't go far, because it doesn't look like there's any questions. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Ingram.
Thank you. This is the State of First Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance 1553, approving the fiscal year 2024 tax levy. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the city has scheduled the first of two public hearings on the property tax millage levy. The first hearing is scheduled today, September 5, 2023, to solicit public comments on the proposed property tax millage levy prior to the adoption of the annual budget for the 2024 fiscal year. The agenda has been structured to provide the council with the opportunity to comply with both city charter and Florida statutory requirements on the budget and tax levy. The council needs to convene a public hearing on the proposed property tax millage levy and make announcements at the public hearing prior to formal consideration of the attached resolution. The recommended property tax millage rate is 6.455 per $1,000 of assessed value, which is the identical mill from the current fiscal millage rate of 6.455. The recommended property tax millage rate of 6.455 is .5796 mills, or 9.86% higher than the rollback rate of 5.8754. Subsequent to the adoption of the resolution, the council should take action to approve the attached ordinance approving the ad valorem rate, tax rate, for the upcoming fiscal year. If approved on first reading, the ordinance will be scheduled for second and final reading on September 19, 2023. Main reasons for the ad valorem, tax revenues increasing, full funding of the new fiscal year '23 police positions, previously only funded for six months, continued wage increases to meet obligations of collective bargaining agreements, funding for the first year of the proposed new three-year police union contract, a proposed 4% cost of living adjustment to general employees, and the proposed implementation of a 2% merit pay increase upon a successful performance evaluation. 31% increase in overall general liability and property insurance premiums stemming from the statewide fallout from last year's hurricane season. 15% increase in health insurance, funding to continue efforts to make the city's benefit package more attractive. 2.75 new FTEs added to the general fund. .5 FTE for a project administrator that will be shared between the enterprise funds and the general fund. .5 facilities foreman for public works, again, shared between the enterprise funds and the general fund. So that's 1.0 shared between, so for the purpose of the millage rate in the general fund, it's half of the FTE. A total of 1.0 FTEs for two part-time custodians in public works, and this replaces the contractual work we currently have. So it's not really adding cost, it's adding, replacing the contractual work with FTEs, maybe a little bit more because of the benefits, well, actually, it's part-time, it won't be benefits, but the taxes. And finally, .75 administrative assistant in human resources. And finally, it's not, it wasn't in the agenda, but Carlos hit upon it in his presentation, this does not require any appropriated fund balance to balance the budget. In fact, we are looking at, we're budgeting a reserve of $68,800 coming back to general fund. The suggested action is that we recommend, staff recommends that city and council approve Ordinance 1553 on first reading and schedule a second public hearing and second reading for September 19, 2023. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I'll give the public an opportunity to comment again, since there are any members of the public seeing none. Okay, council members, questions on reference to millage rate, Mr. Ingram or Mr. B. U.?
I'd like to add something, too. The Florida statute does require that the adoption of the budget and the millage levy resolution or ordinance shall be by separate votes.
Okay, roll call votes. Very good. I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting a millage rate of 6.455 mills for fiscal year 2023 to 2024, said millage rate being .5796 mills or 9.86% more than the rollback rate of 5.8754 mills, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve on first reading, a first public hearing ordinance 1553, setting the millage rate at 6.455 mills for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chambers?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Schisler?
Yes.
Councilmember April?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance 1553 is adopted on first reading unanimously and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, September 19, 2023. Next item, as I mentioned earlier, is related to this one. It is the First Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance 1554, approving the fiscal year 2024 annual budget. I will open the public hearing, and Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain.
Ordinance 1554, approving the fiscal year 2024 Ordinance 1554, approving the fiscal year 2024 annual budget. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the first of two public hearings has been scheduled today for Tuesday, September 5th, at 6:00 p.m. to solicit public comment on the annual budget for the upcoming 2024 fiscal year. Notification of the public hearing was initially provided to all property owners in the truth in millage, or TRIM, notices provided by the property appraisers office in mid-August. The recommended budget was presented to the city council in a series of budget workshops to review and solicit adjustments to the allocations of the budget documents. The total city fiscal year 2024 budget amounts to $102,922,552. A budget summary document is attached illustrating the total budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The proposed 2024 budget reflects the following. As stated before, the millage rate of 6.455 has not changed from last year's millage rate. An 8.5% increase in single-family residential and commercial sanitation rates beginning October 1st, 2023. 5% increase in water, sewer, and irrigation rates beginning October 1st, 2023. $183,000 in general fund capital programs minus the matching grants. $2,740,900 in community investment tax fund expenditures to include replacing public safety vehicles and equipment, building improvements for fire stations 1 and 2, city hall renovations, and community parks and recreation facility improvements. $6,828,790 of utility services hardened water facility funded through revenue received through the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. An additional $2,555,555 of ARPA-funded stormwater projects. $1,515,000 in non-ARPA-funded street improvement projects. So those are funded through our street improvement fund. $550,000 to purchase two commercial sanitation trucks and containers. Again, $68,800 for the general fund reserve for contingency, and a 4% colist salary increase for general employees, and a 2% merit pay upon a successful performance evaluation. Staff recommends that city council approve ordinance 1554 on first reading and schedule a second public hearing and second reading for September 19th, 2023. And I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I know my colleagues have several questions, but prior to that, are there members of the public who wish to comment? Okay. Let me start down here, change it up. Councilmember Abel?
Nothing, no.
Councilmember Schisler, I thought you had some.
I've got three quick questions.
Okay.
The proposed project administrator, administrator, that's for ARPA also?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Second question is, any indication on what we could expect for increased property values as a result of the VA coming online probably next year?
Mm-hmm.
Or is that already cranked in?
No. That's a very good question. The VA is not yet on our tax rolls, nor is the development, the D.R. Horton development. We do expect that next year, so that will be another boost, nowhere near the Amazon, but.
Don't expect that.
I would expect maybe another 10%, at least.
All right. So that gives us some, something to look forward to for the future budgets, as you had, as you had said. Okay. The last one, has there been any indication by the B.O.C.C. of an initiative to extend the CIT?
Yeah.
There is one, okay.
Had some conversations.
Okay. Because maybe we can urge them to do that, if we could.
If it's okay with you, maybe I'll talk about that during.
That's fine. No, no, that's fine. Yeah, no, just, just, okay. And I have some comments later on.
Actually, just wanted to clarify. You'd asked about the project administrator with the ARPA projects, so I just want to make sure it's clear. So we, the ARPA projects, we brought, and we had one at the last council meeting, and actually today we had another one. We are, we are proposing project management through using our external consultants, our engineers on retainer, basically. That's how we're managing those projects. The project administrator, tangentially, yes, they'll talk about, they'll deal with ARPA, but that's just one of their, of their elements.
Okay.
They're not managing a project, per se, an ARPA project. They're just looking at the totality of processes and financial accounting and things like that.
Okay, that's fine.
Funded by general fund, not ARPA.
That answers my question. That is my question.
To be clear, that is not funded through ARPA dollars. The, the project administrator and the FTE.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to imply that they were.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Just want to make sure we get, we have this managed properly, that's all.
Got you.
Okay, I'm, I got, that's all my question. I do have comments, but not questions.
Question?
No.
Question. Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, first, I want to say thank you to the staff, finance staff, and all of the city staff, because doing the budget is a very laborious process, and I think we obviously put a lot of time into it. So I want to reiterate for the public that.
Questions? Questions?
Well, so my, so my question is, based on all the workshops that we've been through for the budget, is everything basically the same except for the change with the police contract?
Jim can correct me if I missed something, but I believe you are correct. We made changes from the June workshop to the July workshop, and then we had the PD contract issue, and that was the single biggest change at that, at that point. So that also changed the unassigned fund balance number, so that, that would have been different than what it was back in July. Jim, am I missing anything here?
There, there were just some minor tweaks. For instance, when we got the building fund in place and we looked at, oh, it needs a contribution back to the general fund. So we did add a small amount based on our overhead allocation formula, which helps the building fund also, because you don't want that, it's still well under 10%. I think it's under 5% now of, of a net. That's the whole purpose for the state, making you separate the building activity so that you're not overcharging. So there was that, that did add some money back to the general fund, I think $31,000, after all the police stuff had been entered.
And then for the community investment tax, you indicated that it might be difficult to get all of the vehicles and things that we are looking at purchasing with that, that funding. What happens to that? I know the tax sunsets theoretically in 2026 unless somebody extends it, but what happens to the funds that we have already received if we're not able to spend them in this budget as anticipated?
So my expectation is that we will have the flexibility to spend those dollars in the future, spend that, if this stops in 2026, we have money left over. My expectation is that, like all communities, we'll probably have to spend it down to, because you're not taking anything else from the, from the community, per se.
Right.
You just have dollars you've already received, which were allocated to you, so they're, they're your community's dollars. So I would expect that if we don't, for example, we've got the 11, 11 vehicles in the, in the police department. If we can't pick up the 11 vehicles in the police department, we'll, we'll obviously acquire the ones we can, and then next year we'll come back, and those dollars will just remain in the CIT reserve, and next year we'll come back, and we'll probably have to go through the cycle of budgeting for whatever the number of vehicles we didn't.
Okay, but we don't lose the funding that's been allocated to the city?
My understanding is that, no, we would not lose that funding, but it's something that we'll definitely want to check. We'll probably have our city attorney, you know, reach out and confirm that before we get close, but that, I don't believe we would, again, again. We're still within, within the confines of, of the tax that's still in place until 2026, so we're not getting anything after 26.
Right.
But what we've already gotten would be what we were entitled to.
Okay. So then, my, my next question, my last question is really about the pension funds for the police and fire, and that is, the actuary comes and gives us the number that the city is required to contribute, and in years when the investment market, the investment returns are doing well, our contribution is lower. When, when is the timing of that actuary's report, and is the current funding that we have established in the budget what the actuary has said we need to fund for 2023, 2024, or will we expect that to change?
It will not change. The, the actuarial value for fiscal year 24 was presented to us in November of 2022. They always, you know, because they know we have to budget, and so we have the exact amount budgeted. Now, November, this November 1st will be our new report, which I expect may be a little bit of a raise in what we have to pay, simply because the past year was not a good year. Now, in terms of the investment return, now that's starting to go back up this year, but the timing is such is that they'll probably be looking at that year and the, the investment losses for that year to, and try to make it up fiscal year 25.
Okay. So in terms of what we've got budgeted for all of our contractual requirements and all of our anticipated debt and all of our required spending, we do not anticipate those amounts changing based on the established budget?
Correct. There's, yeah, just not in this budget.
Okay. That's it.
Good. Okay. Very good. In that case, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting the final operating budget and the capital improvement budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024, authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions as are necessary to achieve and accomplish these service programs, authorizing the city manager or the finance director to transfer monies among the departments and programs within any fund, authorizing the city manager or the finance director upon receipt of a donation or grant to appropriate said funds in the expenditure line item of the program as requested by the donor grantor, providing a severability clause and an effective date.
Good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 1554 upon first public hearing and first reading.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, comments. Councilmember Fernandez, comments now?
No. My, that was it.
Okay. Comments?
I, I have to. First of all, this, I've been involved with the city budgets for probably the eight years, either consulting with finance and prior administration, and then my tenure on, on council, and this is the best presentation, thank you, Mr. Bay, that, and Jim, and Jennifer and everybody else. Clear, concise, to the point. Just a couple of interim things, just so everybody's on the same page. The 9.4% of growth in the taxable value, that's good, solid, organic growth. It's no, not a lot of new business, not a lot of, not a lot of new properties that isn't going to be there next year. So as long as the markets stay stable, then we can, you know, that, that should be held, continue to be healthy. To the kudos to the finance, last year we made a change in the investment policies. I believe that helps us to be dynamic in, in capitalizing on the interest rate changes that, that, you know, the plus side, as you spoke about. It's helped us to maximize our, our interest revenues. The internal, the internal transfer policy and, and process that you guys went through, that's been sorely needed for years. You guys did a great job with that, but everybody knows that's just neutral to the city. It's just, you know, what was in this department should be over here, and it just helps keep everything balanced and proper. And, and with, with the, the wage reviews and the, and the personnel reviews and so forth that you guys did, long overdue, and it was just, just very grateful that you guys got, got it done. And then last but not least, you indicated that the club was, the, the, the external debt to that extinguishes next year, but the club still owes us almost 2.4, a little over $2.4 million, which will go out to 2020, 2043, excuse me. But other than that, I think it's a phenomenal job. Thank you very much for all the effort. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And we have a great partner in HR.
Yes.
We've still got work to do. We know that there's a lot of improvements that we still are looking to do and wanting to do, and Mr. Bay has been a great, great leadership, and so appreciate your words. So, thank you.
So thank, just real quick, because we've been at it well. Thank you to Mr. Ingram, Ms. Newman, thank you so much. City manager, very smooth budget process. I do want to comment to the public, and hopefully we have a lot of people watching, we have a few people here. We have had now for two years extensive conversations during the budget development process about the necessity to raise garbage and water. And so we haven't had a lot of discussion about that tonight because we've talked about it so much during the budget meetings. I want the public to understand, because once the notice went out in the water bills and the trash bills that we were going to do this, we did get some people that called and says, oh, my gosh, you know, why are you doing this to us now? Don't you understand that groceries are up, insurance is up, electrics up, everything is up? And at the same time, the city is now doing this to us also. I just want everybody to understand that there's not a single person sitting on this dais, elected or staff, that doesn't take every nickel of taxpayer money that we collect from you seriously. There's not, we, we do not collect five cents from you that we don't feel like we have to collect. And so the costs of the garbage increase, it, that's an enterprise fund, has nothing to do with your taxes. That's like running, that's its own fund. So it pays for itself. Whatever we collect from user fees pays for the cost of picking up garbage and dumping it. The increase that you saw last year, and then again, 8.5 this year, reflects the costs that it's, the, the increased cost. This is a pass-through. It's costing us more money for diesel. The two big things that are driving this are diesel and tipping fees. The tipping fees are what it costs us to take the garbage to the incinerator. I would love to tell you that this is not going to happen next year. I can't tell you that, because whatever the county charges us for tipping fees, there's no other incinerator we can go to. So we're kind of, this is a pass-through. So if they raise the rate again next year, which is likely, this will probably happen again, hopefully less than, less than 8.5, I hope, but this could happen again next year. These are, these are costs that we don't control, just like you paying your utility bill. The water is the same thing. We pipe our wastewater, all of our sewage goes to the City of Tampa for treatment. We don't have our own sewage treatment plant. They charge us a per gallon rate to treat that wastewater, and what they charge us is what they charge us. We get the bill in the mail, just like you get your electric bill in the mail, and we have to pay it. And so this is, again, this is a pass-through of what it costs us to get the water treated. So I don't want, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that, because we did get several calls of people, and I get it. I mean, unless, you gotta, most people don't sit home and watch YouTube videos of the city council doing, having budget hearings and talking about, I mean, I get it. Most people have real lives. But I, I do want you to understand that we did listen to your calls, we do take this seriously. These amounts reflect the minimum that we can afford to raise and still keep these funds solvent. So I don't want to beat the horse to death, but I do want the public to understand that we hear you, we get it, and this is not frivolous. We're not buying any gold-plated garbage trucks with this money. This is what it's costing to do the, to do the job, so. Okay. Madam Clerk, would.
Did you, did you comment?
No.
Did you want to?
No.
No, she's saying she's good.
She's saying she's good.
Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Oh, yes.
Vice Mayor Chambers?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Schisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Abel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Ordinance fifteen fifty four, approving the fiscal year twenty four annual budget is adopted on first reading and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty three. That took a lot of work to get that done, even though it went smooth. So, very good. Next item is the first public hearing and resolution approving SPR twenty three dash zero three for the site development of four townhomes located at eight seven zero one Overlook Drive. City Attorney Shishon will explain why this is a public hearing for a resolution.
Because this is what is required by our ordinance.
Oh, okay, that was simple.
That's it.
I could have read that myself. Okay. I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who intends to speak on this matter to stand for the oath by the city clerk.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. City Attorney, would you please poll for ex parte communication?
If any council member has received an oral or written ex parte communication, please let us know at this time, with whom you had that communication, when that occurred, and the content of the communication. If written, a copy of that must be provided to the clerk for the record. Councilmember Fernandez?
I have none.
I have had none.
I've had none?
I've had none.
I've had none.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. And our community development director, Mike Sherman, is here to explain. Welcome.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight for the council's consideration is a resolution approving Site Plan Review twenty three dash oh three, a site plan review application for the development of four single-family residential attached dwelling units at eighty seven oh one Overlook Drive. The owner of the project is Race One LLC, and the applicant is Development Support Services LLC. So, the council remembers back a couple of months ago, I believe it was, maybe last month, there, we had the second public hearing to rezone this property from the R ten to the PD zoning district. So this slide is one that I used back in that, but it basically gives a general area map. To the right, it shows that it's at the intersection of Grove Hill Road and Overlook Drive. The address again is eighty seven oh one. There's going to be four attached dwelling units. Let's see, the zoning is PD. The current future land use map category is DMU thirty five, and it's approximately point two four acres. So, we're having two hearings with this one, because our land development code requires that when we have site plans associated with planned development zonings, there'll be two hearings. This is the first public hearing tonight, and as we noted during the rezoning, that this property is compatible with the surrounding area. It's surrounded by a mix of single-family and multifamily dwelling units, so these four units should fit in there quite well. This is the site plan, sheet C one, I believe it is, of the site plan set, and it's just got, on the left, there's some final site plan dimensions. The lot width is one hundred and forty feet. The lot depth is about seventy five feet. The lot area is a little over ten thousand square feet, which is just under a quarter acre. Side yard setback's eight feet, rear yard setback, seven point four feet. Front yard setback, thirty five feet, building height, thirty five feet. There's eight parking spaces, and the access will come from Grove Hill Road. So as the council members, elevations were presented, and were part of the attachments for the rezoning, because these are so pretty, I just wanted to show the, these nice elevations again. This really fits in well with the architectural standards and design standards in our land development code, and the applicant has come a long way to try and meet those standards. So, the Development Review Committee is a city body that looks at the site plans to make sure they meet the technical requirements of the land development code and other city ordinances. We reviewed this application. There were three rounds of comments. Most of the comments have been addressed. There's a few minor revisions required, and we're including those right now as comments in Exhibit C, which are conditions. We fully believe that these conditions will be resolved by the time the second site plan comes back, so I'm hopeful that there'll be no conditions for approval, or maybe one or two as it relates to particularly this sites, site plan. So, I thought I had made a change on this. So I want to go ahead for the record and read these conditions. I'm sorry, I thought I had included it in there. So, the first condition in Exhibit C is the proposed development shall allow the construction of four single-family attached townhouses as outlined on the final site plan, received eighth twenty four, twenty twenty three, as part of the application submitted to the planning and development division of the city by the applicant. Construction shall take place in accordance with the criteria and requirements of the City of Temple Terrace Land Development Code and downtown community redevelopment overlay plan zoning district unless specifically outlined within these conditions. And what that says is, they'll design the site in accordance with a set of site and construction plans that have, and included in the agenda and will be part of of the file. The second one is if future dumpster card enclosures are proposed, they must meet the land development code requirements for placement and enclosure. Right now, the applicant believes that they can use the roll-in dumpsters that single-family homes use, because they, and they have garages, they can put them in there. But at some time, if they realize that's not enough, and they have to have a dumpster for enclosures and screening, it'll have to meet the land development code requirements. The third one is we want them to, at the intersection of Grove Hill and Overlook, we want them to show the site triangle on the site plan itself. We want them at the time of building permit to ensure compliance for bicycle parking. We made a statement of the overhangs cannot exceed three feet into the required yards. There's easements for stormwater in the property, and we need those conveyed to the city. There's a couple ways it could be, it could be done, through just recording of an easement or through a plat, and we're still discussing that on the method for that to happen. And prior to the issue of a permit for site development, we're asking the applicant to provide additional information regarding tailwater assumptions. We want, like the applicant, to update the tailwater used in the model to reflect the crown of pipe instead of the invert of pipe per the FDOT drainage manual. Now, I'll tell you what a planner thinks that means, because these are engineering comments. Basically, what we're asking them to do is show us that at, at heavy rain events, that the roadway's not going to flood, and that the model initially was used with, they've got an inlet on their, on their property where the water will run into our stormwater system, and from what I understand, the initial design was done showing the pipe empty. Well, we want the design showing the pipe full of water, to make sure that it can take that water away, and we're not going to have street flooded, flooding. So that's what their last condition is, and I fully believe that will be modified by the time the council gets the second review at it. So our recommendation is adopt the resolution twenty three oh three for the property located on Overlook Drive. So any questions that the council may have?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I see the petitioners here. Would you like to comment, sir? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, counsel. I just wanted to go over just a couple of points and reiterate that this has been a long journey, and thank you for your patience and willingness to work with us. We heard you. We heard you. We heard you. We heard the community. We work with them. We started at eight. We reduced it down to four. We had to tweak our Key West style. I think we've got the appropriateness of it. We've worked with staff. And just to highlight those four comments, showing the bike location, that's been updated, it's on there. It's a condition, when we go to permitting, that sometimes that, where it shows on the plan, it may change, but we're fine with that condition. We, it's currently shown on the plans. The site triangle has been addressed, and that's one of the conditions of constructions for the permit, is that when we come back, if things have changed, i.e. a tree has grown up, or the landscaper put a tree inside the site triangle, that it won't exist inside there. So we've addressed that comment as well. The stormwater was really just technical language. We produced that and resubmitted that, and as it relates to the garbage cans, we're willing to meet that if we feel, if it's necessary, but we don't believe it meets the code or requires us to currently do that. But thank you for your time, that you've worked with us. I wanted to share, because we can't have ex parte conversations, but my partner Julian worked for you as Captain Ross. He's like, this Captain Ross, two thousand nine?
Well, after the second hearing on this, we can have.
We can have a talk after that, but he said, this Captain Ross. But thank you all for your time.
We will follow up on that. Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Very good. Councilmembers, questions? Yes, Councilmember Schisler?
Yeah, real, real quick. Every time you guys talk, you come up with a new terminology. What's tailwater?
You just had to ask, didn't you?
I'm sorry. You know, he usually does it more than anybody.
I imagine it's the opposite of the headwaters.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay. Well, you know, that does make sense. Okay.
It makes sense to me, and then I'm a planner, not an engineer, that that's where the water's exiting.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. That makes sense. You you put it in that context. The second question I have is, can you go back to the the rendering?
Yes, sir.
There, no, there. Is that a patio on the third floor up there? I can't tell if that's a stick.
Right now, yes, that is an.
A patio, and that's okay. I like, it looks good. I like that. That looks nice. And then last, how long till they can turn dirt?
Well, so the site plan will be approved. This will be a, I don't want to say priority project, because always our priority, but we'll work this through as quickly as we can.
Is there, they got a lot of money tied up in this, I'm sure, and the the interest rates probably killing them along with everybody else.
If this passes tonight, it still has.
No, I realize that. I realize that. But that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Other questions, councilmembers? Okay. If not, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
Title of the resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, approving final site plan review application SPR twenty three dash zero three for point two four plus minus acres of land located at eight seven zero one Overlook Drive, folio number two zero one five eight four dash zero 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 to permit deconstruction of a multi-unit townhome development of four attached single-family residential units, subject to any conditions of approval imposed by the city council, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date.
Very good, and thank you. I made a mistake going there, let the record reflect as a resolution, not an ordinance. Okay. Councilmembers, is there a motion?
Move to approve first public hearing, resolution SPR twenty three dash oh three for the townhome, four townhouse homes located at eighty seven oh one Overlook Drive.
Second.
Motion and second. Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted on first reading and will appear for a second public hearing on Tuesday, September the nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Thank you for being here with us again tonight, and after, are you going to be here on the September nineteenth meeting? Okay, I think that might be a longer agenda, though. We'll, we'll make this whole rendezvous thing happen after September nineteenth. Okay. Okay, council business. Is there any carryover council business from previous meetings? Okay, new business and board reports. I know the vice mayor has something. Okay, vice mayor, you have it.
Thank you. I'm the council's representative to the Arts Council of Hillsborough County Advisory Board, and we meet quarterly, and that is a, the Hillsborough County Arts Council is a division of Hillsborough County, and I don't know if they call them departments, but I was told they call them divisions, and of the fifty six divisions, it is number fifty six in size and budget. But it does a great thing. It it looks over all the art projects, and not just art in Hillsborough County, all the the ballet, the Tampa Theater, all the different performances, all, anything related to art, whether it's performance or visual. And one of the biggest things they do is give out grant money, and they get money for the grants, mostly from Hillsborough County budget, but they also get it from the state. And in our meeting today, we had to look over and approve the requests to go to Hillsborough County for the grants for this year, and there's three different groups. But I'm telling you this because of one thing. We had of the three different areas, forty nine applications to review for the grants. It took me about an hour each, now, because it's my first year, but they are so detailed, and these groups from the Tampa Theater, Brandon Ballet, I mean, I I can't even read all the rest of them. The detail they put into this to get money up to twenty thousand dollars, most are asking for ten or fifteen thousand, and most of those are matching grants, so those groups have to come up with the money. The reason I'm telling you this was because at the last Hillsborough County meeting, commission meeting, one of the commissioners questioned whether that money, grant money, can be put into transportation needs in Hillsborough County. Now, the grant money's not that a lot. It will not go to pave a mile of road, I don't think, but that's one of the questions, and it was discussed today, and that's going to be on the agenda for the county commission on this Thursday. It's time certain at ten fifteen. And I just brought you that to your attention. I don't, I'm not asking for council to weigh in on it. I'm just bringing it to you that they bring in those projects, performances, everything in a year in the county through economic development, bring in so much money. And even our Temple Terrace Arts Council, mainly for the Arts Festival, we've applied and gotten grants many times in the past. We didn't do it this year. We didn't have a project or park that qualified. We plan to next year. But it brings in people to our county, and it brings in a lot of economic development. So I just wanted to let you know. It was very disappointing to hear that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fernandez?
I have two items. So, at the Temple Terrace River Watch Task Force meeting, the members discussed removing non-native vegetation in the river, and the request from that group, that board, is that city council, if it's the city council's desire, give direction to city staff. And so the the process would be, city staff would apply for a permit to remove, it's the Brazilian pepper plant, and the permit would encompass all city-owned property on the river to be as accessible for volunteers to go and pull, because you can't, the only way you can really destroy that plant, which is non-native and and damaging to the river environment, is you have to actually pull it. So this would be a project that volunteers would then be organized by the River Watch Task Force to go and pull the Brazilian pepper plant in areas that are city-owned property on the river. So we, they, their request was, if city council agrees with this project, to give direction to staff to start the permit process.
Okay. Have you had opportunity to discuss with the city manager?
I have, I did briefly discuss it with the city manager, and Mr. Tinch was there at the meeting and and talked about the permit process.
Well, certainly can't speak for council, but I think we'd be looking for some staff input on this, and also, I mean, are they going to indemnify the city, or are we on the hook if they get injured during this? Or they just asking us to pull the permits and allow access, or are we going to agree to haul the, are we gonna?
I think they would go with the volunteer agreement sent here.
Are we going to haul the waste vegetation away? It seems reasonable that they would expect that.
So, may I?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez, this correction, I did speak briefly about this. I have not had a chance yet to sit down with with Mr. Tinch, just to go over all those details. But if 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 the council's okay with that, what I would do is, between now and the next meeting, we can get you some more information. I can report back on the nineteenth, given understanding of the totality of what we think this might entail, and then we'll go from there.
Well, we did ask him to look for other things to kind of expand, so, I mean, but we certainly don't want to give you, I wouldn't think we'd want to tell him, yeah, go ahead and get the permit. We don't know, you know, I want to make sure you're on board with this before we do that, wouldn't?
Yes. And then my, my second item.
Hold on, let me make sure that everybody else is thinking the way I am. I don't want to assume that. So, is this something that we think is a good idea? So is this something that we think is a good idea, that we want the city manager and staff to? Sounds good to me. I don't.
Worth looking into.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
There could be other issues we have to address.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm not assuming you agree with me here. Okay.
Okay, so then my, my second item is, I'm the city's representative to the Art and Cultural Committee for the county, which is a little bit different from the Art Council. So the Art and Cultural Committee primarily focuses on events and providing grant funding for those events, not as much focused on providing grant money for ongoing seasons, like the ballet season. It would be more about an event that an organization would like to host in Hillsborough County. And the criteria really is about it being artistic, of cultural significance, and attractive to a number of people. So it doesn't have to encompass all of those, but it could, it could be, the Gasparilla Arts Festival might be one that might receive some funding. So I just want to make sure that people know that if you have an organization and you have an artistic or a cultural focus in an event that you're going to have, that these are funds, they are allocated to this committee by Hillsborough County. They are Hillsborough County tax dollars. And this committee then reads through all the grants, makes recommendations for funding, and that recommendation will go to the county commission, and they'll actually make the final funding decision. But the next, so they fund grants twice a year, and the next grant cycle should open January 8th and run from January 8th through January 26th, 2024. So if there are organizations in the Temple Terrace area that would like to have more information about this, it's on the county commission website and with the full criteria. But I just want to make sure that our residents know about it in case it's something that, we don't want to not know about potential funding. So that's it.
And, and the Temple Terrace Arts Council has benefited from that grant also.
Yep. Very good. Thank you. New business? Okay, a couple of things. I wasn't, you asked a question about CIT renewal. I can tell you what I know. The city manager and I have both had conversations with different county officials. I've talked to Bonnie Wise about this. It does run out in '26. It was a 30-year grant, grant, we're talking grants, a 30-year tax, the penny. And it's not my role as your mayor to tell you what you should think about a tax. That's up for everybody to make up their own mind. The steps in this process are already underway, and what the county, the county staff is already doing, they've done some of this, I expect them to do this in greater detail, is they've already assembled some examples of things that have been paid with this tax, the things that have been bought. And so they've said, you know, so many millions of dollars have gone to parks and green space, and so many millions of dollars have gone towards the emergency equipment, police cars and fire trucks, and so much of it has gone to this kind of stuff. We have contributed to that report here, but not in a lot of detail. It's kind of been a high level, you know, over the past 28 years, how much, you know. I expect there to be a lot more drilling down into that to try to inform the public of where this money goes. I will tell you that the steps in the renewal would be, the county commission would have to vote to put it on the ballot. It wouldn't make the ballot unless the county commission votes that it gets on the ballot. Once the county commission, if they do approve it, to be on the ballot for renewal, then the voters of Hillsborough County have to vote on this, whether it passes or not. There's a new state law that didn't used to exist, that if this fails, it can't appear on the ballot again for two years, isn't it? I think it's two. Is it four? It might be. Yeah, you might be right. It's either two years or four years or 36 months or some, it's a period of time. It can't appear again. So if it gets defeated, if it goes to the voters and it gets defeated, it's, it's gone for a while. Obviously, a lot of this will come down to, at the county commission, there'll be a lot of discussion about what will be the funding formula, so, because it won't be the current one. I'd almost guarantee you that. Because Hillsborough County Schools is kind of going their own way, trying to do something different, so that portion of it would be pulled out. The NFL wants to do some improvements on the stadium. There's some pushback about how much they're willing to pay for, you know. So it, it, where the money goes will obviously impact how people feel about that when they go to vote on it. And it will also impact whether the county commission votes to put it on the ballot. So we will have, I anticipate at some point us being asked to provide more information to the county, which we don't really need official council action to provide information. But I would not be surprised at some point if we, and it's up to you. We don't have to do this, but we probably could take a position on this if we wanted to as a body. To, because as it is now, we're not, at least I take this very seriously. I don't try to urge anybody to do anything as the mayor without the council directing me to do so. So either for or against. So we, we're not there yet, I don't think, but that's where that's going. I also want to tell the public that this is one of the few mechanisms that Temple Terrace has to get tax revenue from everybody in the county. There are a couple of other minor, we get some gas tax, we get some bed tax, but the, but this is the biggest. If you remember the slide during the budget, I mean, all that capital stuff, you want to see your ad valorem go up. Watch this CIT go away, because there's $3 million worth of projects in this budget that would have to be funded by your property taxes. So they would have to go up. So everybody that comes to a Super Bowl here, everybody that goes to a Taylor Swift concert, everybody that comes in town and gets drunk and walks up and down Bay Shore for Gasparilla, all that stuff they buy, we get a portion of that penny. And so I'm not a real pro-tax guy, but from a city leader perspective, this is a no-brainer, right? People in downtown Tampa are paying this. People who are visiting are paying this. People who are passing through our airport are paying this. People that don't even live here, coming on vacation, are paying this. So for me, this is a simple one, but that's just my opinion. Can I answer your question?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So council, I do have a, I sent you guys an email a week or so ago. We have what I think is a great opportunity, but I need, this is something that the council needs to take action on if you want us to pursue. City manager Baia and I met with Dr. Rick Will recently. I've been in discussions with him for a while about this. Dr. Will is a retired professor emeritus at the Mumma College of Business at USF. And he is the chairman of the Board for the USF Credit Union. He's still affiliated as a professor emeritus with, with the Business College. And what he does now is to, all he does is work with doctoral candidates on their dissertations. And so pretty squared-away guy. I think I sent you a bio of his. So Dr. Will has offered to help us with a new strategic planning method that would enhance our planning leading up to our goal-setting meeting in March of each year to identify projects prior to the budget development. I think this is a terrific opportunity. What he's done is, at the credit union over the past, I think, Carlos, 12, 13 years, something like that, probably. He took a strategic planning model that was developed at Harvard Business School, and he adapted it for use at the credit union, and they started using it there. And they used to do it every two or three years, then it went to every other year, and now they're doing it every year. And so he would do the same thing for us here, and he would publish about it, because to his knowledge, this model's never been adapted and put to use in a municipal setting. So what he stands to gain from it is academic publishing. What we stand to gain from it is really high-level strategic planning that we could not afford. And so this process would start right after the holidays, close to the first of the year. Would require you to fill out a questionnaire that he would give to you, which he estimates would take probably an hour. And then he would have a one-on-one with each of us, would, he estimates, to go over the questionnaire to make sure he understands, which would probably take another hour of your time. Then he sends you his synopsis of all this to make sure that he's captured your thoughts clearly and asks you to review it, which he said probably takes 15 or 20 minutes. Then he would, we would have a public meeting where we would talk about everybody's input. We would get input from the staff, you know, okay, this is workable, this is, you know. But this is primarily a council exercise, although, you know, we're not kicking the staff out. But I mean, this is primarily something for us to do, to establish priorities for the city manager and the city clerk and the city attorney to know what, what our expectations are. Would take, I'm guessing, probably five or six of your hours of your time over a three-month period, probably. So.
Yes, I think it's a good idea.
Yes. Good?
Yes.
We're good?
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity. I'm really excited about it. I think it'll really help us focus and take thoughtful action to clarify our vision, and I feel so lucky that we have this opportunity. So this is really good, I think.
I think it's good, too. I think this could be a game changer for us, so. Okay, I'll send, we can email and tell them the council's on board with it. All right, any other new business? Board reports. City manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite up Kevin Woodard, our recreation supervisor for our senior programs, to talk about this year's Senior Expo.
Mr. Woodard, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city manager, for giving me an opportunity to come. I certainly want to inform you all, but I know you know most of what goes on for our senior expo. So mainly, this is for our public, and I want to make sure that our seniors know that senior expo time. So everybody get ready to come up to the Omoke Lightfoot Center. This is the 34th annual Senior Expo, because we did continue this during the pandemic. We did drive-through expos, just so we could keep our seniors informed about things that are important to them and services they need in the community. And that's the driving force behind our expo. So we have over 30 vendors that will be at the Lightfoot Center. They're there to talk to seniors and their families and caregivers, and it's a broad range of subjects and vendors that are there. Spinks Law Firm is actually our title sponsor this year, and we have CarePlus, Family Hearing Centers, Simply Healthcare, and GlideWell Advisors as our sponsors for the event. Now, what we've done different this year is we freed up some space in the center, and we're going to use that as a presentation area. And each of our sponsors is going to come for a 15 kind of mini seminar session with seniors. So we'll be able to have them come into a room where they're not in the hustle and muscle of the expo itself and have some meaningful time with these sponsors to hear about important law changes and things that are going on, especially this time of year. Our goal is to get out the new Medicare and Medicaid. Legislation has changed and what's happening in the insurance industry for them as they get ready for their enrollment periods. And then we have a broad range of other vendors, including our city departments, the police, the fire department will be there, libraries there to talk about the services and answer some questions that seniors may have about getting their garbage can to the road before nightfall and things of that nature. So we think it's a very important event, and we're very proud to, to put that on again for the 34th time. And I would also like to sneak in, well, again, it's a free event, Friday, September 22nd, from 9 to noon. And we invite all seniors and caregivers and family members to come and talk to the vendors and get some information that they, they may need hearts there, aging services from Hillsborough County. So it's a broad range of different vendors that can come and share with the seniors about services in the community that they can apprise themselves of. And of course, we're very proud about what we do at the Lightfoot Center. And I put in your packets our calendar, just to make sure that you've seen that. And I want to make sure that our seniors and caregivers and family members know that this is online on the city's website every month, so they can go under useful links and find senior activities. And you can find the calendars updated every month. And we have our daily activities on the front, and then very importantly, on the back, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that we put closure dates for the center, special events that we're having going on. Something I did want to address tonight is, we actually have started a specific Parkinson's exercise class for seniors, for their caregivers as well. And we've partnered with PD Life on this, and this is a very important program. And I want to make sure that our seniors and caregivers and family members that have someone with Parkinson's know we have this for free at the Lightfoot Center every Tuesday, and that's listed down there. We've also partnered with the police department, and our community liaison officers are coming in every second Tuesday of the month to do a brown bag with a badge. So all of our seniors are welcome to come in, bring a, bring a lunch if you'd like, 11:15, 11:30. And this month, we're talking about investment scams. And this has been very well-received by our seniors. We're having 25 to 30 seniors come and show up for these events every month. So we're very excited about that. Unfortunately, the Calypso Queen Cruise is already full, so I can't take up any other seniors on, on that trip. But I also would be remiss if I didn't express to you what a great staff you have that takes care of our seniors in the city. And Kelly and Michelle and Ricky do a fantastic job at the Lightfoot Center. And we would love to have more of our seniors come and avail themselves of the services and programs and activities we have at the senior center, and the expos will make you find out about that. So appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Woodard, if there were people, yes, I know there's a couple of questions. If there are people maybe at home listening to this, or who have a loved one who might be interested, or maybe they are interested themselves, but they don't have access to the internet, is there a number that they could call to get further information?
Yes, so we're at 813-506-6635. And that number is always on our calendar. They're welcome to pick our calendars up at Lightfoot. We'd love to meet them when they come in. We can explain more about activities, how, for instance, how Silver Sneakers works in our facilities, and what seniors can do to actually come in and possibly get free memberships for both the family complex and the Lightfoot Center, or what a Lightfoot-only membership may be. And these calendars are also available at the Family Recreation Complex. So that 6635 extension will get you to the Lightfoot Center, and we'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. I think.
Mr. Woodard, I got to tell, I got to tell you, thank you so much for putting on the PD Life. I know some seniors that go to that, and it's made a tremendous difference in their lives, being able, instead of having to go all the way over to McFarland Park on the other side of town, they can come here and get the same, the same exercise, and it really is a benefit to them. And I think I'm probably the only senior up here in this dais, but, but I haven't been there yet. Someday I might go to these. But thank you very much for the Parkinson's.
Take it.
Take it.
Councilmember Fernandez?
For those who aren't aware, what age is a senior? What, what age would you be to participate?
So we qualify a senior as 60 and over. We do have a lot of, we have individual instructor-led classes, and we do allow all age groups in those instructor-led classes. The 60 and over criteria we use for our daily congregant activities. So I think we're very blessed, and our forefathers were so wise in taking a facility and dedicating that for senior activities, so that we can focus on seniors and their needs. And, and they can do the activities that they like without being surrounded by all of the other trappings of, of, you know, our great family complex. So 60 and over is our guide for general activities. So, um, 60 and over is our guide for general activities. Uh, we also do provide transportation for Temple Terrace resident seniors who have, um, issues. They may be medical, or they may not have a car anymore. Um, and those are 55 and over, um, for transportation needs. And again, they can call us at Lightfoot if they're interested in that service. And I hope the taxpayers of Temple Terrace know this is one of the very important things that is funded through the Parks and Recreation Department. And, uh, we have a lot of seniors that, they may have a medical, um, an eye issue or a surgery that precludes them from driving for a certain number of weeks or months. And we provide a service where we can get them to doctor's appointments and, and things of that nature. We, we take them for grocery, um, trips, which was very important during the hurricane. Um, you know, we were able to service a lot of seniors and make sure they had their provisions. So, um, again, as a citizen of Temple Terrace myself, I'm very proud of that, something that we do for the citizens. And call our office, talk to Michelle. She does a fantastic job coordinating our transportation services. So 55 and over for transportation, 60 and over for congregant activities. But our individual classes, like we have floor yoga classes. We have, uh, currently a Zumba class. You don't have to be this old, but we have a Centrogenarian that does our Zumba class on Thursday nights. So we have a, a broad range of, of age groups.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard.
Thank you very much.
For the record, I do not qualify for this. I might look like I do, but I do not. City manager, back to you.
Um, I, Mr. Woodard actually mentioned in passing there, Dan, about the hurricane. I, I'd like to take a moment just to, uh, thank everyone for their patience. Uh, uh, during the hurricane, we were, as everybody knows, I think, and unrelated, we were very, very fortunate here in the city of Temple Terrace. It's always, I always feel conflicted when I say that, because somewhere else was not as fortunate. Uh, but we were this time around. And I want to, uh, thank, uh, our entire city organization. I mentioned departments individually, but I'm sure I'll forget people. But I know, I can just think of, you know, the Polk Works crews filling sandbags, uh, leisure services working, everybody, fire department, police department, IT, um, finance, uh, across the board, staffing the EOC. This is my first chance to staff the Temple Terrace, uh, EOC, and that was a memorable experience. It, they, I was struck by the fact of how much of a family it felt like, a family affair. Uh, a lot of ribbing and sort of joking around, but, you know, when things were serious and needed to be serious, they were, they were, they were very focused on, on doing what's best for our community. So, uh, thank you to everybody. Thank you also for the city council's support. I know a few of you came out to the EOC. That was good to see. Everybody enjoyed that. And, uh, hopefully, this will be the last one for the season for us. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Beaia. City attorneys' report.
Uh, I just wanted to report that, um, this concerned a lawsuit that was filed against the city. On August 25th, the judge of the Circuit Court in Hillsborough entered an order granting, granting summary judgment in favor of the city. In the lawsuit filed by the former city manager Stevenson against the city alleging breach of contract, there is a 30-day appeal period that is currently running, and to date, nothing has been filed.
Thank you. Council members, anything else to come before the council? Staff? You just want to go home. You're not going to bring anything up. I got it. Oh, my goodness. All right, this is the fire chief.
Real quick, I, I, I want to thank, um, everybody, just like the, the city manager did, and, uh, being in there, and, uh, all the directors. We, we didn't have one complaint from one city employee, uh, where they stayed, where they slept, the hours they worked, not one. And, uh, I, I attribute that to the leaders of the directors and leadership that's here today and the leadership, um, city manager. The city manager was in there with us the entire time and slept at the fire station, just like everybody else did. And, uh, um, I don't think that we would have done our job and could have done our job any better without the leadership of, of him. And I know I speak for all the directors. Um, so I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the, many of the, the council members stopping by as well. Means a lot to those that were in that room and was talked about after, um, you left. And, uh, I just want to thank, um, everybody that had a hand in this. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, chief. And, and I'm very proud of the work that all of you do during emergencies and every day. And so I, I know our official model, you know, motto is amazing city since 1925, but the Mayor Ross motto is we're good and we're getting better. And so if you watch these meetings, if you'd have watched them a few years ago, they didn't go like this. And, uh, we are really going places now. You've got a great city council. We've got a good leadership team. We are rocking and rolling. And so, um, keep up the good work, and thank you for everything you do. And with that, we will stand adjourned.